At this time, I'd like to call the monthly regular board meeting. They have a secretary's office to order. If we could all rise to a flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Bebel, meeting is properly announced.
Yes, sir.
Is there motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
Go ahead. Motion made by John, secondly, adopt to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Here we go, and we'll start this vote, Joanne?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
The other Jeff, I'm gonna do that.
Oh, my God.
Good Jeff.
A good Jeff.
Jeff two or... Jeff, it's about to be number one or number two.
Alright, so, go ahead. Jeff Presley? And my vote is yes. With that, we'll go to student recognition. Mr. Presley will be giving out the awards tonight. Would you like to take that?
No.
AFD. Paris, please come to the couple of seats up front if you'd like to take pictures.
So, Mrs. Crispell was hoping to be here tonight to present this, but she had a medical issue and couldn't be here. But, and I'm sure she would say this a lot better than I can, I'm just gonna read what she wrote and I'm sure she would have a lot of great stories about him. It says, "She works hard in the classroom and is willing to try anything that is asked of her. She models exemplary behavior for all others to model. She always has a kind word for everyone. Grayson does extra work at home to practice her skills and truly cares about her learning. She makes my day by always making sure to give me a positive goodbye when she leaves." Now typically, Grayson would give you a medal, and Mrs. Crispell has it at home, but I have a picture for you. There's your medal.
Just as the same. Thank you.
Alicia?
Get right up the front. Don't sit back, Mandy can take it, you can't. Well, this is Tucker Fergie. He's a kindergarten, or Grand Marsh, pardon my voice, you guys, I've had a bad cough with a lot of people. But, Mrs. Bate, he's in Mrs. Bate's kindergarten class, and Mrs. Bate was unable to be here also, but I would like to read what her and her classmates say about you, Tucker. So, Tucker has been a wonderful role model in our three Bs. He works hard to be respectful and responsible. He has wonderful carpet expectations, reminding to sit at a zero, and he always holds his hand up using our universal sign when they're not doing it, so that's great. When he's been out of the classroom, he comes in quietly and doesn't, and does his work without any complaint. He tries his best, which is awesome, buddy, on his work. He works hard to follow the school rules and takes them seriously. If they aren't being followed, he reminds his other students to do the same. He follows the Be Safe rule by walking in the hallways and remembers to push in chairs. I have a lot of them in here, alright? And, he does, he is a good friend to others, which is the most important thing, and I am very proud of Tucker and his great efforts to follow our Bs and be the great student that he is in kindergarten. Grand Marsh's Student of the Month for November, Tucker Fergie. Medal? You get today, the award is in your car. Take it. Okay, got it. Come on, let's go. We'll go back by Mr. Martin to give the...
Middle school.
Laura Melvin, our Spanish teacher, will be presenting tonight.
And I just found her to presenting about two hours ago, so I hope, I hope I can get some good information. Well, Maya, dear, I've known Maya since she was in sixth grade. She's in my Spanish class right now, I had her in Spanish last year. She's a super hard worker, she's always right there to help her classmates, positive attitude, big smile every single day. She's also one of our safe school ambassadors, and you're gonna be hearing from her a little bit more about that a little bit later. But really, she's just an all-know positive student, and I love that in every class.
High school. Paul?
So, I'm here. Somebody might recognize Paul. He's been around the community quite a bit, but fun fact, he just moved here last year and is just starting his second year at the high school. I first met Paul because there was a bus referral in that Paul got, and we wondered, what's going on, this new kid, Paul, got written up on the bus. Turns out through the investigation that Paul stood up to two brothers that were bullying another student and not listening to the bus rider. So, something a lot of students wouldn't do, he had no fear, I think. Standing up, and then also taking that, taking that force from the other students and deflecting it from the other ones. So that's when we knew Paul was a man of great integrity. Ms. Harder actually nominated for this award, and she said, "Paul's been a role model since he came to our school." I think everyone in the high school would agree. "He sets a great example for others by being respectful and teachable 100% of the time. He starts every day with a positive attitude. What I appreciate most about Paul is his kind nature. He goes out of his way to make sure others are having a good day, from a little bit of encouragement to a hug. Paul is always there to put a smile on your face." The other things, Paul also started, or was a founding member of the Crew Club at the high school, which is a positive group. FFA Officer, I believe, or Leadership Team. Drama, he's been in the one-act play. He was in the radio show at the Adams County Theater. Link Crew Mentor, I believe?
Link Crew.
Link Crew Member. And, you probably know, so, noticed him for being elected by his peers as Homecoming King this year. So, in a short amount of time, Paul made a big impact on this community, thank you for it. Congratulations.
And bonus tonight, Jeff wants to stand here. And bonus tonight, we're actually gonna recognize two staff members tonight with achieving the, I don't wanna get this wrong, National Board Certification as teachers. So, if we'd like to call Joel Johnson first.
Do you want to be kind of close with National Board Certified Teacher?
So, what it is, is a threshold that a staff member, as they teach, they apply for it, it's extremely rigorous, they submit a ton of paperwork, there's videos that they send in, and you have to prove your ability to diagnose how students learn and then prove that they are learning. And I think, if Mr. Johnson, can you add, did I miss anything to that?
No, a lot of assessments, you know, we look at the results and guiding instruction for unique learning style.
Okay, and we have tonight with Mr. Johnson and Ms. Alakna will be our eighth and ninth National Board Certified Teachers on staff.
Why eighth, I'm before her.
Congratulations.
Teeny eight teacher, would you like to say anything?
I will say Joel and I kinda guided each other through this whole process, it was good to have a teammate doing it, and we had a whole group of people, so it was good to have a team. Ellen Wolosak, I think, really kinda led our, our group in the process of this, so...
Great. Go ahead. With that, award winners can go out in the hallway and take pictures at this time. I don't know if they'll even take some pictures, or, of all the award winners. If they'd like to come back to the meeting after that, you may, you cannot, you can leave. No words on, we'll just have the, you'll read the student stuff, but you'll get a copy of it. You'll read the student, the student representative report, but we'll give you a copy.
Okay.
Once everybody leave, Fergie will let you on start. At this time, I give you Fergie, and he's gonna give the student representative report.
Thank you. On December 21st in the afternoon, Grand Marsh is having some pre-holiday buzz, the approved Santa will be a highlight. AFD dental cleanings continue through this month. On Friday, December 7th, there are pennyware winners, had their pizza party and five light segregators were able to go shopping at ShopCo to help select presents for the Toys for Tots organization. A holiday dinner with Santa and other activities will be Monday, December 17th. Dinner will start at 4:30 and will go until 6:00. The activity's starting around 5:30 and going until 7:00. At AF Middle. On Tuesday, December 11th, in the FAC at 6:30, there'll be a choir concert that applies to the high school as well. On Sunday, December 16th at 1:00 PM at the FAC, the middle school winter band concert will take place. And the middle school student council will be hosting a dress-up holiday week during the week of December 17th. On Friday, December 21st, there is a staff sing slash play-along concert. Interested for or staff members should come to the show, curl us if they'd like to perform. Eighth graders Angel Banks and Emilio Hogg have been selected to participate in the Allstate Honors Band at the University of Wisconsin-Clare campus on Saturday, January 19th. And the middle school has started a new art club of more than 40 students, and a number of them made ornaments for a tree at the Gummerson Mountain Hospital, it's part of the old decorating program here. At AF High School, the high school band is hosting a December tour number, which is a holiday banquet concert, which will take place on the evening of December 20th. Tickets are being sold by various staff members. They've had to include dinner, various instrumental music performed by students throughout the night, and a winter band concert filled with holiday music. There will be raffles and a silent auction as well, and all proceeds are going forward to Chicago Band Trip, one of the Heritage Festival at Chicago in the spring. AFHS also participated in the ACCE's Pennyworth for Toys for Tots. Mr. Beel's homeroom won the pizza party, and a total of $183.48 was raised in about a week. Something I'd like to highlight tonight, the AFHS has been hosting a men's day class on Wednesdays called "An Introduction to Industrial Maintenance," co-taught by Christian Weglars and Leighton Scholes, a men's day instructor. Students receive one men's day credit and a bet on Wednesday nights for the past three months. The high school will be looking at offering a new class to students and community members this spring, with the goal of having a four-course sequence available. On November 24th, the AFHS student council helped out with the annual Old School Santa at the Eagle Schoolhouse. They also passed out cookies and cocoa after the holiday parade, and cookies were made by Mrs. Sood's class. Today, a group of high school students attended a leadership conference hosted by Milwaukee Bucks. They learned about many leadership strategies and are attending the game tonight. On December 21st, student council's sponsoring a pre-holiday fun day for all the high school students. They'll have a modified schedule, and holiday-themed activities will take place throughout the afternoon. And to sort of cap things off, there will be no school December 24th through January 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Fergie. More, do you have any questions? With that, we'll go to public comments, we'll start with Jamie Hendricks.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of possibly moving the fourth graders from the elementary next year in Grand Marsh to the elementary in Adams, which I found out about today. So, I'm a little nervous. Jamie Henderson, I graduated from Adams Friendship, and my husband and I decided to stay in the area and raise my family. Okay. On April 12th, 2012, at 18 months of age, our son Dawson was diagnosed with autism, among other things. He had full, three full years of in-home intensive therapy, went to early childhood, and then onto Grand Marsh. Dawson is currently a third grader, one of 16 in the class at Grand Marsh, and six of them currently have IEPs, which is Individualized Education Plans. He's come really far, continues to mature and grow daily. He enjoys school where he feels safe. We owe so much to the wonderful teachers, teacher assistants, special education teachers, lunch ladies, and all others that helped Dawson through the years. It hasn't been easy getting to this point, the first few years were extremely rough. His anxiety was through the rough, especially with a mother like me, right? For him to get used to the AME for one year, and all the students crammed into one building, yeah, it's just crazy to me. And then, the following year, he has to get used to the middle school. When we first, when we first heard that Grand Marsh Elementary was closing in the future, we were disappointed that our now one-year-old would not be able to go there, but Dawson would at least finish out fifth grade. The next thing we knew, the fifth graders were being sent to Adams instead. Now, we want to send the fourth graders there. Students like Dawson could benefit from at least one more year at Grand Marsh. I hope you can put yourself in my shoes as a parent of a special needs child, and in the shoes of Dawson. He may be just a number to you, but his well-being, future, and smile are more than a number to me. His success as a student isn't nor hands. I've never been with this before, and I understand you're not gonna answer my questions tonight. I have to leave right away because my kids are sick, but I just would like your thoughts, and I'd like to follow up with you on the following. I'd like to know why. Why, why are you doing this? It's just crazy. I just think it's crazy. Students like Dawson, he really could benefit for one more year. Well, I mean, what are the cost savings with moving one class? There's the same amount of students, this, this is my opinion, of course, same utility costs at Grand Marsh, you're still gonna run every single day, the lights are gonna be turned on in every single room, there's longer bus rides for these kids, we're fortunate enough to have grandparents that are able to bring children, remind children back and forth, so he doesn't have to ride the bus. And then also the proposal for the IEP students from here on out. Right now, there are two great special education teachers at Grand Marsh, and there's so much time that they have with these kids, and it's wonderful. Dawson's come so far, so I'm just wondering, now what? They're gonna be crammed in one room with all these kids, I can just picture it. I don't wanna switch districts, but I'm just, I'm scared for Dawson, so, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Lorraine Olsen.
Good evening. I wish I could hear the reason why the district has chosen not to move the playground equipment from Rusha Creek to the middle school before speaking, but you don't allow that, so I have to speak on what I've heard throughout the district. It was told to me that they asked the students what they would prefer. And there are several reasons why I and you should find this wrong. First, recess should be for everyone, not just the majority. It'd be a different story if you already had both equipment and the pits and stuff, and that you had extra money and could get some, something additional, and could only do one, but when a group has nothing to start with, this is not the way to handle a decision like this. Second, when did it become the responsibility of the students to determine what our schools look like? Maybe we should have them vote on the upcoming proposed administration changes. You're using the students as a scapegoat not to follow through on your word. I just saw the newly attached document, and nowhere was it asked that if playground equipment was available, would you use it? So, on at least two different occasions, you said you were going to move the equipment from Rusha Creek, one of them being August 27th at the annual meeting. Rusha Creek families fundraised and donated money to purchase that equipment. Did you just give it away without even giving that a thought? How many parents helped to reassure their children that moving to the middle school wouldn't be that bad, and partly because there would be playground equipment to play on? In your private life, if someone doesn't follow through on their word, how much do you trust that person? How often would you continue to go to them? I would like to remind the board of an old saying that I believe still holds true to this day. "A man is only, is only as good as his word." So I must ask, Mr. Bebel, how good is your word? When will you move playground equipment, or get them playground equipment, as you said you were going to do?
Thank you, Lorraine. With that, we will move to, is there consideration, Lorraine, for a closed session? Is there consideration, Lorraine, for a closed session? Here we go, we'll move on. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Jeff?
I'll second.
Jeff Presley? Motion made by Jeff Presley, and seconded by Jim, to move the consent agenda. Discussion. On the consent agenda tonight, we have one resignation, Amanda Zigan?
Ziger.
Ziger. Englishman school teacher. We have two gifts, a class of $20,000, $500 from Aaron Hartee for donation for the play squad basketball, and $300 donation for winter wear, came from Zion Lutheran Church, a big black women's group.
There is an additional gift.
There is another one here, combo gift donated by Carmen Price. It's a Yamaha Series 414750, includes a stair pad, bell set, some sticks, cover, bell stair pad for a value of $400. We'd like to thank those people for those donations.
And there was also another one that came in later this afternoon. Ally Cooperative, they have their pride pump.
Oh.
I was printed out prior to.
Okay.
So Ally Cooperative, they have the pride pump downtown, and this donation from Ally with the pride pump was $435.78.
With that, is there any discussion? Here we go, we'll start with Sean.
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff Presley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Michael, yes, okay. With that, moving on, District Assessment Report.
Mrs. McManus will pull it up so we can see, and this is, there's a federal requirement, part of the ESSA Act, in which each state has to come up with some sort of system in which they rate their schools, their public schools. So this is Wisconsin's version of it, and what I'd like to do, and we did this last year, is go through the state report card, just explain the different parts, and then how we're using this to improve what we're doing. The first thing that stands out is on the upper left-hand corner there. The score of 60.2, and that is a score that meets few expectations. What we have to be careful with are a couple of things. First one is, it's easy to see that score and apply that to our students. That is not what that score can be used for. What that score can be used for is, it applies to our process for educating our students. And that is something that we have taken on head-on and reviewing, and we're trying to get better at this. Certainly, with the score of 60.2, that is, we need to do better, and we're dedicated to getting better. So let's go through that and find out, well, what is it exactly that puts us at that meets few expectations? So if I could have it scroll down just a little bit, and we'll see on the left our district information a little bit more clearly. This is how they group our students, and what they'll do is, in the spring, there's a testing window in which our students take this test, and then those numbers are compared against other students in the state and how they're doing. So a couple of our categories that are of note would be race and ethnicity, our largest race is white, but then we also have Hispanic, Latino, and if you do, I just took it times 1,502 students, which is our attendance last Wednesday, so we have 112 students in that group. And that's important because in order to have that group qualify to then compare with other groups, it has to be 20 or above. Now, for a district our size, you know, 20 or above, that makes sense, but if you get down to smaller districts, sometimes they'll be able to use that number and judge it against other schools, sometimes they won't. The other major groups for us would be the students with disabilities, so there's a little over 300 of our students there, and then economically disadvantaged, that'd be 935 students, taking that percentage multiplier by 1,500. So those are those groups, and if I can then scroll back up, we'll see these four categories, and it takes those students judged as a whole and then as groups, and how are they performing against other students in those categories versus other schools in the state? So the top one, student achievement, that's just flat-out attainment. Are your students at a 10th grade level in 10th grade math, for example, or eighth grade, which is actually one of the age groups that's measured, they don't do 10th grade math. District growth, this is the one where it measures the pace of improvement, so that is how they're charting our students as they matriculate through the system. Are they growing at the same rate that other students are through the state? And we'll come back to this one, because this one, and specifically the English language arts, you can see where our score is drastically below what the state's score is. The closing gas, that's referring back to those different students and comparing them against other students in the state. And the bottom one, the on-track and post-secondary readiness, it's pretty self-explanatory there with the graduation rate, attendance grade, how we qualify, I shouldn't say qualify, we're competitive at those with around the states. So keeping those four things in mind, if you would focus now on the priority area weights, and this is something that the state has continually adjusted, and we're in the fifth or sixth year of the state report cards, this was, this used to be straight 25% for each category, but they decided to weight those categories to be more responsive and maybe a more accurate state report card? And that's, if I can take a little picture of their quick, that's why it's really difficult to go back over a five-year period and try and chart growth, or the lack of growth, with just that number in the upper left. just that number in the upper left, because it's really measuring something different each year. That aside, being meets few expectations still means what it is. There's no way to excuse that or to explain that way. So with our district, you can see student achievement is weighted at 6%, and it's a sliding scale. The reason that is, if you refer back to the amount of students we have economically challenged. The theory is, if you have economically disadvantaged, ours are 62%, they're recognizing that as a whole, that group of students will not come in and will not be at the level of attainment because of the economic disadvantages. So that's why for us, student achievement is barely weighted at all in this equation. But on the flip side, student growth is heavily weighted, because there's no reason why, once they start school, that we can't then see that growth. That is an example of how we can use the state report card to get better. It is targeted at right there. The closing gaps is right around 25 and on-track and post-secondary readiness. So that is who we are. What are we doing as a district is a fair question. There's two main things that we've started this year. One is, we had a disjointed path for a student as they went through an elementary to a middle to a high. There wasn't a lot of communication bridging those different levels. So we've incorporated a couple of programs this year. One on the behavior side is Review 360. That is a program in which our staff can use to document student behaviors and then document things that have worked. So when a student comes from the elementary into a middle, middle school setting, they're not starting over clean and wondering, oh, what we have. They can use that information to look back. The second thing we're doing is, we purchased it, it hasn't been implemented yet, but it's a system called EduClimber. The name isn't really that important. But what is important is that all of our student data, so we have the state test results, each student will have an account, they'll have their state test results, they'll have the benchmark testing that we do as a district. You may have heard the Funtas and Penel reading score. That can be entered into this. And all of the other baseline tests that we have for our kids. And a staff member can then pull up a student's name, and as this information is gathered and accumulated, they can look back and say, oh, well, here's a skill that they're deficient in, I can target that. And that will travel with the student all the way up through graduation. So those two things will allow us to target that growth for the student. It'll take out a lot of the guesswork, it'll allow our teachers to be more prescriptive and technical with their approach. On that same line, we, as a leadership team, we are trying to get aligned. We're trying to do away with separate schools within the district and making it one district working for all of our students. So that's been a, that's been a highly encouraged and repeated term this year, and that is, let's get aligned. Because the student shouldn't have to start over at each big break in their schooling. With that alignment has come, at the same time, a very detailed focus on our instruction. As we review what we do as a school, there are many things that are outside of our control. Many things. But the one thing that we control is our instruction in our techniques of teaching to our students. So that is what we're focused on, improving that. We're putting accountability behind that, and we have an urgency behind, let's identify sound educational practices, let's share them around, and let's make sure that our students are receiving that. That's at the leadership level. We've also started at the teacher level with our district school improvement team. They also are trying to get us aligned prepaid through 12. So we're all focused on the same targets that we identify as we go through this year, and then we can improve on those. So to bring it all back, that score of 60.2 is disappointing, but we have to be able to use it to get better. And everyone that I've spoken with is similar. Yep, that's our score. But now we're going to take that and we're going to improve. And I can answer any questions about the state report card at this time?
If the DPI finds a strong inverse relationship between student poverty and school performance, why don't they adjust the student report card to reflect that? Because it doesn't recognize it for a person who didn't hear your explanation or read the DPI report, that's all they see.
Correct. And honestly, I oversimplified the process. The running joke is that there are two people in the state of Wisconsin that truly understand how that number is attained. It is very complex mathematical formula. I don't know really how to answer that question, but that number's there. And if I can return to what I initially said, don't let anyone say that's our kids. Okay, that's an insult. It's our process. We're going to use that number in that report card to review what we do so we can get better for our students.
And I think we have to stress that what we're trying to do is reduce the achievement gaps and making sure that our youngest student enters ready to learn. So I think perhaps we need to do a better job of saying that publicly and informing our parents about that, because I get really disappointed, because I know how hard we're working, and yet I don't think, I mean, the minute we look at that, we feel that we have failed, and we have not failed. Because the DPI recognizes, and we fall right in there, and I read a report that schools that met few expectations have nearly 62% of economically disadvantaged families. So they see the correlation, but they don't address it in publications like this.
I believe that would be the federal weight, saying, do it this way. And remember, we do rely on maybe 8%, 9% of our budget is federal money primarily through Title I. And it's the age-old thing, if you want to accept our money, play to our rules. And that's fine. I think it's also so important to understand, how can we use this so we get better tomorrow? Any other questions?
This was the, what, second or third year on the parent test? Didn't they make a switch in there just a few years ago with different?
Oh, yeah, I think they stuck with the same vendor now for three years. Is that correct principle?
But the test changed. It's still changed, it's same name but different test.
It's very, it's right for a school to say, you know, you keep changing the test and all that. And that's accurate. They've measured different things each year, they have. But if you look back at our history, we're normally right in there. So let's improve our instruction, as I would agree. And like Kathy said, this isn't a thing we're walking around and we're not getting better. Farthest from it, we have people very dedicated trying to get better at this. What we have to do is get aligned with how we're doing it, so as that student travels, that's an area of improvement we can do as a district.
And I think one of the positive things is, once we pass that referendum, we can focus on student achievement instead of what programs we have to cut. And I think that was, and it showed that the community supported us in that venture.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Preble. A F, middle school playground equipment.
I think you skipped me. Oops.
My, my.
There should be four things.
Right, right. Yep, we can go to District Assessment Report.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I just get so excited to talk about assessment. So what you'll see here are the state and the district assessments. Now, I know Jim just went ahead and told you about the overall state report card, and I want you to keep in mind, when they do the state report card, they're not taking into account all the assessments we give to our students. The state report card only looks at the forward exam, that's given to the majority of our students. And then it looks at the ACT, and it also looks at the dynamic learning maps, and that's given typically 1% of your school populations, your students who have severe cognitive disabilities. But on top of that, we also give a number of other tests, some required by the state and some that we choose to give. So you'll see that there's a document up here, says the grade level, it says who says we have to give it, and why we're giving it, and then also the dates that students are being assessed. Pretty much what you'll see is, as she scrolls down, there isn't a student in our district who's not going to be assessed. They'll be assessed some way or another in pre-academic skills with the, what's that one? The PALS. But then also we do Funtas and Penel. We also are doing AIMS Web, which we talked about before. There's a number of assessments that we are currently looking at, and through that we're looking at not only how the students are improving week to week, but also looking at how they're improving from fall to spring and year to year. So that's why you see there's a different number of assessments. And I know there's a lot of information on that. At this point, I feel this little district is adequately measuring the students' academic achievement through this. We identified that there were some gaps, and that's when we implemented other screeners, like the A F ASD math screening. So through that, we are now able to make sure to screen all students and to make educational decisions. What questions do you have?
So the ACT rating, it's given to all juniors?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. How do we use the work keys?
Well, I wish work keys was maybe used a little bit more by companies. If you take the ACT work keys, it gives you like a gold, bronze, silver score, and that's saying that if you were in a certain type of job, you'd score so well. But tech skilled schools can go ahead and look at the ACT work keys, work keys. Some employers look at the ACT work keys. It's not just an assessment that's used in the state of Wisconsin, it's used throughout the nation.
So let's go back to where we presented on. So when they take that into this report card for the ACT, does ACT go into the report card? Do they take the same, like, first test that all students took in the state?
At one testing date.
The one.
That it's usually been March, in which every student in the state takes it on that date, that's the score that they enter into the report. And there are, I think what you're hinting at is, there are several students that will take the ACT several times.
I think our school, they probably take it once. There are other schools who, they're taking it three times.
But the state is paying for it at one time, and they can still submit that off to colleges if they choose to take it again, but that's usually on their own dime.
Any other questions? Thank you. A F, middle school playground equipment.
Okay, thank you. It's been brought up several different times, so we wanted to address any concerns and just inform you as to how we provided playground equipment for our students. We've always had playground equipment at the middle school, but when our fifth graders transitioned over, it was last spring, and I immediately put in a work order and said we'd like to bring over some playground equipment from Rosha Creek. It just, it made sense to do that. We transitioned over, our students started the school year, and we started to notice what they were doing, okay, to see what they were doing. And we were thinking initially, Mr. Robinson and I were thinking, we're going to get rid of the skate park, kids don't want the skate park. And then we heard the scuttlebutt, oh, no, we like the skate park. And we thought, we better ask these guys what they like to do. So that's kind of where you see it here. In the picture there, you can see there are different things, they can play foursquare there, there's basketball hoops, this is just the concrete area, you have the monkey bars, basketball, there's two Gaga ball pits, that is all the rage. Like, there's times where there's 50 kids around a pit, it's unbelievable. There's a skate park over there, there's some swings, the track is used when kids want. They haven't used the softball diamond as of yet, because our spring was so wet, but that's where kickball could be played and things like that. So if you could just play head stakes. We did a survey, we just asked them, what are your favorite things to do at recess? And this is where kids landed, when we saw that, you know, there was a significant number of kids who enjoyed being at the skate park, and got some parent feedback. And after school, it's quite, it's huge, we had kids, fifth graders bringing in rollerblades and helmets and scooters, and some of our kids, they truly enjoy that skate park. So then we said, well, put on the brakes, we better not do that. So then if you go on to the next slide, the question was, if your favorite option's not available above, that first question was up there, what would you play? And they said basketball, it's there. So they're still getting used to school, right, and learning what they can and can't do out there. Hide and seek. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of areas to hide out there. Maybe fortunately for us, there are tetherball poles there, so we had to get some balls for that, and then soccer. And they can play soccer, kids do play soccer now in the football field, the practice football field, so a lot of kids are playing that as well. What would you play if it was available? Team tag, we have it. Cool math games, we have indoor recess right now in the winter. There's an option for every child to either go outside or stay in if they so choose. Our fifth and sixth graders, because everybody has a separate lunch in recess, our fifth and sixth graders are in the choir room, and they play games in there. And our seventh and eighth graders, when it's their lunchtime, they're in the library or outside. So they have that option. So you can see that some will be the one, their Xbox, okay? We don't have that at all, so. And foursquare is available as well. And then finally, there were 24 students who said that they would like monkey bars if we had some, so then we brought some over from the playground. I was asking the fifth grade teachers last weekend meeting, I said, what do you see the kids using when you're out there? Is there anything that we're missing? And they, one of them said, I think we need some monkey bars. And another one said, there are monkey bars, nobody's on them. It was kind of funny just watching them talk about it. But certainly over time, it's not something that we're opposed to getting additional resources if our kids are interested in things. So there's also swings out there, I don't know if I got that one in there or not. And we didn't take a picture of the football field and soccer area, but that's always, you know, two-hand touch, that's what we want, reminded of fall, hand touch. Stuck in the mud, they play, you know, they play a lot of games too from fights, so. Even eighth graders like their athletic outfits. It's quite, they're bringing special loves now. So that's going to be.
So are you seeing that, like, a big slide, or what would be the equipment that they might be missing or wanting? Did they indicate slides and swings?
Um, when I think of playground equipment, I guess I'm limited, we got your monkey bars, so what else is left? Slides and swings, right? What else would be there? Well, there are some swings, and what's interesting is, they go to the same spot. You know, once they get into their play groups, they like to do the same things. So I don't, we don't see. So, I don't, we don't see much for slides right now. They like to climb on things, but really Gaga ball pits. And now that there's that inside option too, for the more social ones and less physical active, you know, ones, they, they've, they're busy. I've asked the fifth grade teachers, "Are your kids missing anything?" And right now, they don't, they haven't stated that they are. But it's not, it's certainly something we'd address if they, you know, we'd work, work for it if they want something else.
How many rooms are open for indoor?
Um, right now, we have one room for indoor. And there's about, what do you think, Chris? 20 to 30 kids that stay inside? Depending on the day, how cold it is. So, and they play headbands. I don't know if you've seen it. I mean, there's different games they can play. Some of them play on their phone books, things like that too.
Have you noticed an increase in behavior? Is there a lot of write-ups for recess?
Okay, so I was an elementary principal before. There's less behaviors now than there were when I was doing that. The Gaga ball pits are pretty good. I mean, they, they really help. Because it's a, a real team effort, and they're all policing each other. So, that's, that's kind of a neat one. The ones that always get a little more, where there's a little more testosterone going in the game, you know, when they're playing football, doing hand touch, that kind of thing. That's where you get a little more heated with some of our students. But other than that, it's been pretty good.
Does anyone have a question? Thank you. Safe School Ambassadors.
Good evening. I just wanted to remind you about the Safe School Ambassador program. So, it was a program that was brought up from one of our grants. It is to address bullying for students. So, it is a peer-to-peer intervention where students are trained on how to speak to other students who might be bullying or be involved in bullying. There are also family groups where the students feel supported during this process. And largely from our parent focus groups. We've heard this program called out multiple times, that parents are very happy that this is here. Students feel very supported through this program. During this last school year, we were able to train our staff. So, we no longer have to go to an outside resource and have them come to us to offer these trainings. We now have staff members who are trained to work with our students and train other staff members how to run this program. So, I have planned to come to some of the students today. I'm going to ask the high school first, followed by the middle school. Who would like to speak to you?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Ender. I am one of the trainers of trainers for Safe School Ambassadors at the high school.
Sure.
I'm Emily Tyson. I'm also one of the trainer of trainers at the high school for Safe School Ambassadors. This is Ashley, one of our students.
Hi. My name is Ashley Jenkins. I'm a senior at AF. And I've been in Safe School Ambassadors since it first came to the school, which I believe was my sophomore year. And so, freshman year, sophomore year, it's all the blur. I just know I've been in it for quite a long time. So, Safe School Ambassadors, aside from all the technical stuff. For me, when I first heard about it, I thought it was something that a lot more schools need. Because you hear on TVs, it's like, big cities, there's a lot of bullying. But what you don't hear is about what goes on in small schools. And so, backstory time. Personally, I have been bullied for a multitude of reasons, which I won't go into, I won't bore you with all that. But it really does affect the way a student comes to school, and it affects the way that they view school. If they come to school and they realize it's a negative environment for them, but based on one person, it changes their entire outlook. They don't want to come to school. They don't feel motivated to continue and to graduate. And a program like Safe School Ambassadors can change everything for a kid. I've seen it happen. And I may not have been one of those kids that a Safe School Ambassador came and helped, but it helped me as a person. Because by coming up to somebody who might not be having a good day and entirely changing them because you just show support, it just, it drastically affects everything. I've seen students go from not wanting to come to school to being excited to come to school. And you have this new connection with people. And it's honestly mind-blowing. I didn't even think that this could be possible. But Safe School Ambassadors helped do that. So, onto the more technical stuff. We had several training days to where we would learn different ways of helping students out, like there are, okay, there are seven at the high school level. There are six at the middle school. Only one involves getting an adult. So, when we say it's a peer-to-peer group, it's, it really is. It's them taking the chance to change the school culture. And that's what is so great about this program. It's really hard for adults to come in and say, "We need to stop behaving this way. You need to start changing your behaviors." But when other kids are policing themselves and stepping in and supporting those kids and not just policing, they're changing the culture from within. And another aspect on the culture, we do have a very diverse school. From what I've seen, I mean, I like to think I'm a diverse person. And so, coming into Safe School Ambassadors, there is a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds just within the small group that we have. And so, when you take those people and you see the kind of freshmen, sophomore, junior, or other seniors that they interact with, they can connect with them on a personal level that they might not be able to get with, say, an adult. And that's another reason I think Safe School Ambassadors is really important. And it's really made an impact at the high school level and at the middle school level.
Just wanted to read the seven.
Yep, okay. So, the seven different things that the high school level has for us to help freshmen for sophomores and juniors or seniors. There's balancing, which is you bring up a put-down. So, if you hear somebody say something negative, you bring it up with something positive. There's supporting, so you say something kind to somebody who might really need it. There's reasoning. And so, if they feel like they might want to, you know, punch somebody, you talk them out of it because there's obviously consequences to doing something like that. There are distracting. So, say, somebody is really upset, and they're just in the heat of the moment. You pull them out of it, and you take a walk. And maybe you talk about something that calms them down. There's directing. So, you maybe tell them to go that way, to just go cool down, go by your friends. Just get out of the situation, take a moment, just breathe. Active listening. And that means that you are listening to everything that they say because sometimes, all a person needs to do is vent and get help. And that is when we need to involve adult because that is when they are talking about harming themselves or others. And then that is the moment when it becomes more than just a peer-to-peer interaction. But that is very something, is something very important that we need to do. The program itself too is not just to adults. So, we don't, we run the program, but we have, actually, we have eight, eight family group facilitators. So, there are teachers and other staff members. We have parent professionals, other adults that are building, who are willing to get involved. And so, they come to the training as well. They get trained right alongside the students. They develop their family teams. They spend two really intense days together. We always talk about, we joke, when we get there right away, we talk about how, in two days, you're going to feel like you, you're not ready to leave. And then it's going to feel weird leaving this room because you're going to be so close, and they're all staring at you like you're crazy. But by the end, it really does feel weird to go back to your normal life and not be a part of this intense program in such a unique way for those two days. So, it's, it's a really great thing. We meet, we have large groups where all the Safe School Ambassadors come together. And then we also have the small family groups. We work on, working on those skills, so retraining them, you know, seeing what we're seeing in our, in our schools. We track the data to look at what things are we seeing. So, when they do interview, what have you done? You know, how many, how many targets were there? How many aggressors were there? How many bystanders were there? And so, we spend a lot of time talking about those things. We also do events around the school last spring. We did several, but one of the ones we did was teacher appreciation. So, each day, we, all the Safe School Ambassadors got together. They were inside many groups, and it was kind of awesome to see them just run with it. But there was just different things to kind of also support the school. We've done the locker stickers where every kid came in on a Monday and had a positive note on their locker. And if they fell down, we had extras. So, we've done just a lot of different things to try and influence the culture from within because we know how important it is to get our kids to school. Because then half of our battle sometimes is getting them through the door. We know that they're capable. We know that they can learn these things. But if they're not in that mindset, they're not ready to join us. Do you guys have any questions for us at the school?
Do your ambassadors report incidences or contacts back?
Yeah, the ambassadors report it. So, we do that through a Google form, actually. And so, it auto-populates into a Google sheet so that we can see it. We've also set it up because our first year, we had several scarier things that they were reporting with. We have students who are contemplating self-harm. And so, it populates in there. So, at first, we didn't have it set up to auto-flag and tell us, like, did somebody put anyone in? So, we were worried that we weren't going fast enough for some of these kids. We've had kids that have come directly to us and said, "This is what I'm seeing. What do I, what do I do?" Because they're getting to the step where they need help for, like, self-harm. So, we've also done a lot of talks about how, if it's something like self-harm, this is not something you just put in the document and go away for the weekend. You have to report it right away. So, we've talked about who to contact, how to do that. But yeah, so they do report it. The issue is if they don't report it right away. Sometimes they forget. So, we do, in some of the meetings, spend time giving them time to record, "What have you been doing in the last month of basically yours in the last three weeks, or however long you've been?"
How many ambassadors?
Last year, we had 60. We've had several that decided they had too much on their plate this year. We're down to about 40, 45. And that's freshmen and seniors. So, we have five family group facilitators this year, which are staff at the middle school.
Thank you.
And at our middle school level, we have Laura Melvin and Gretchen Watson that are our trainers for the middle school.
Hi, I'm Laura Melvin. Gretchen Watson was unable to be here tonight. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our program at the middle school, and then I'm going to let these ladies talk. You heard quite a bit from the high school team. Our program is very similar to theirs. As they mentioned, we do one fewer steps with the kids because of maturity level. But when these kids, these two are eighth graders. We have Maya Allen Harmer and Lily Windsor. When they go to the high school, they can join that high school team. They move right on. They learn that new step, and they're off and running. This is our fourth year with the program. We currently have four active staff members leading family groups. We have a total of six people trained at the school. We've got approximately 40 students that are trained in the program. We're looking at training about 20 more here in the next couple of months and two to three more adults. For me, my takeaway from the program and the training is what kind of a family we tend to build. When we do that training, there's a lot of laughing, there's a lot of crying, there's a lot of hard work. And after those two days, we come out feeling very close. Even in my very first year in the program, one of the things that I started noticing right away after we came back from that training is all the kids who are starting to support each other more. But also, as they mentioned, sometimes we have situations that they need immediate help. And all of a sudden, these kids were coming to me, and they were talking to me about stuff. They were hearing when somebody was thinking about hurting themselves or somebody else that I'd never heard from the kids before. So, I think the training itself is very important for that and the communication. As teachers, we don't hear that stuff, okay? The kids don't talk to us about that, but these kids hear it. So, I'm going to let these ladies tell you a little bit about their experiences, some of the projects we've been working on.
I'm Maya, Allen Harmer. And our most recent project, well, continuous project, is our sharing closet, donation closet. Goes by multiple names. Basically, it's a little wooden corner in the middle school. Builds donations in terms of clothes. It's more than just clothes, but it's mainly clothes. I know we both spent a couple of days after school cleaning out this closet because they're all just thrown in there. And we don't really have nothing left to do. We've cleaned it, we've organized it. Hands over here, clothes, shirts over here. Right now, what's in it is clean floor. We have all this. We just have this one mountain of clothes that we don't really have anywhere to put.
And we, we did posters for the, to put around the school. And it's just positive posters that we can post up around. And we did post-it notes on all the lockers from the school.
And that was for World Kindness Day in November. We started at the beginning of November. We had about a week and a half that they were all getting together during lunch and just posturing up the whole school, cleaning up to World Kindness Day on the 13th, which is when they did all the lockers. Anything else?
That's all we really dug this year.
Okay, that's okay. I don't want to put any impression on you.
Where do you keep all your lockers, your closet? Because they got clothes.
The closet, due to the locks, we just asked the janitors to open it. We cleaned it, we cleaned it, organized it during lunch, a couple days after school.
And I think it's a fair, it's a, it's an ongoing project. I don't think we have a lot of students utilizing it just yet because they're still in the organizing and planning stage. But I think we're getting real close to having it more available to all the kids in the school.
All we need are like curtain bots to hang it up. We just have this giant amount of clothes left.
We do have a little bit of work to do yet to get that all done.
And Ashlyn?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
With that, we'll go to Policy Committee. Kim?
The Policy Committee, at 5:45. We had first readings of all the following policies. Policy 4131, reduction in staff. Policy 3131, reduction in staff. Policy 4120, employment of support staff. Policy 4120.01, job descriptions. Policy 4310, employee expression on non-constructional settings. Policy 4340, grievance procedure. Policy 4430, leaves of absence. Policy 4431, revised employee leaves. Policy 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Policy 5111.01, replacement of ESSA homeless students. Policy 5111.03, ESSA children and youth in foster care. Policy 5518, cell phones and other electronic communication devices and portable media players. Policy 6320, purchasing. Policy 7300, disposition of real property. Policy 7310, disposition of surplus property. Policy 7450, property inventory. Policy 8510, revised wellness. Policy 8531, free and reduced price meals. Policy 8800, revised religious and patriotic ceremonies and observations. And Policy 9700, relations with non-school affiliated groups. All of them will be moved at for second reading at our next meeting.
Thank you, Captain. Finance Committee, Julie.
Okay, first thing on the agenda was the track resurfacing bid. And I may have the Finance Committee. I make a motion to approve the bid from AFAS to resurface the track at a cost of $57,400.
I will second that. Jim? I'll second by Jim to approve the bid for AFAS Restoration Company for $57,400 for the resurfacing of the track. Discussion.
Question I had is, is there a big difference in carrying up the old track, putting the new one down versus going over the old?
A hundred thousand, you know?
I understand the money side, but is there, you know, is there advantages?
I would look at longevity of the product proposed. And even that is an estimate. And in looking at the differences in the prices, I, I don't think it was worth the extra $100,000 to start over from scratch and rebase it as opposed to the resurfacing and giving us a 7 to 10 on average. And that, that was the reasoning behind my recommending.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Kind of like, do they offer like extended warranties if you do certain maintenance every year on the tracks?
Not too at all.
We've been pretty pleased, though. I mean, we've got 14 years when there's a 7 to 10 expectancy from this company, or not?
Yeah, you could argue we got 10.
Okay, so we have four years too long? Okay.
I know it's been a complaint with the track course the last couple of years. It's not been good.
It's to the extent to where it's, you have to be careful how many times you train on the lanes that are used a lot because it's rough and shin splints occur. It's, um...
Is there any more discussion? Eric Dunn, start first with Jim Biggs.
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Chuck Preston?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
My voice has passive nine zero.
Okay, next on the agenda from the Finance Committee were bills. And on behalf of the Finance Committee, I move to approve General Fund Checks number seven-nine-five-three-three through seven-nine-seven-three-six and A C H Checks number nine-zero-zero-one-one-five through nine-zero-zero-one-three-six and two-three-five-four through two-three-eight-zero. Totaling nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents. And Activity Fund Checks number three-zero-four-seven-five through three-zero-five-three-one and A C H Checks number one-one-one-nine through one-one-two-zero. Totaling twenty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents for the month of November.
Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jim to approve General Fund Checks number seven-nine-five-three-three through seven-nine-seven-three-six and A C H Checks number nine-zero-zero-one-one-five through nine-zero-zero-one-three-six and two-three-five-four through two-three-eight-zero, totaling nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents. And Activity Funds Checks number three-zero-four-seven-five through three-zero-five-three-one and A C H Checks number one-one-one-nine and one-one-two-zero, totaling twenty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents for the month of November. Discussion. Ari Dunne, let's start with Hope Wann.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
My voice has passive nine zero. Administrative restructuring.
If the board will recall, last year, uh, winter, spring, we had chartered a course for the consolidation of our educational services. And at that time, we had some, some decisions to make. And we also stated that each year about this time, we will continue to review our situation and see if it would be to our benefit. A couple of the pressures we're up against is the declining enrollment. And with that declining enrollment, you can just equal that with less funds operating the school. So we have to look at these and say, well, is there a way to consolidate and improve instruction and yet save, uh, save some of our expenses? So with that in mind, I believe it's my duty each year to bring up plans for the next year and say, here is a possibility to further consolidate our students. Uh, and that one is currently the fourth grade class of, of Grand Marsh having them become a part of the fourth grade flash, fourth grade class at Adams Friendship Elementary. And some of the numbers to consider, fifteen hundred students district-wide and fifteen hundred and two as of last Wednesday. Our graduating class this year, we have one hundred twenty-seven seniors. Our four K program, students in four K along with renewal unlimited with their groups, both of those numbers together, seventy-seven. So as these numbers matriculate and go through our buildings, we have opportunities to consider these consolidation options. So that is kind of the, the hinge on this. So when we look at this, for example, I'm proposing to consider bringing in all fourth graders in town. We did it with fifth graders last year. I'm saying we should do the same thing with fourth grade. And, and I'm looking at, the biggest problem at our elementary, A F Elementary isn't rooms, it's that cafeteria. That's where it seems to be the most, um, crowded. So this past summer, we increased the size of the cafeteria. If you recall, we had a multi-purpose room now. And that has really relieved some of that pressure. So then I'm looking at the numbers going, well, if we have, currently there are sixteen students in the third grade class. If we bring those in, we're only bringing up seventy-seven. And so the numbers... We have, um, district-wide, we have ninety-four in kindergarten as of Wednesday. Uh, ninety-seven in first grade, seventy-eight in second grade, a hundred and eight in third grade. So you're just kind of adding your, onto those for next year's numbers. So I, I see as our students decrease, we should be able to accept these students and, and increase their services to them. That was the consolidation belief. Now with that, we can restructure our administrative team. And there are four things that I'm asking the board to consider. The first one would be that currently, a principal increases a contract from two-hundred-and-ten to two-hundred-and-sixty days at the elementary level. The other two, uh, the middle school and the high school principal contracts are two-hundred-and-sixty days. The current elementary contract is two-hundred-and-ten for Grand Marsh Principalship and two-hundred-and-ten for A F E. With the in-town job, that also, there's a, an added contract for summer school. So increasing that from two-hundred-and-ten plus summer school responsibilities to two-hundred-and-sixty days is kind of what we're doing already. So it's, that's not a real seismic change. Uh, the Grand Marsh Principal position, so if that fourth grade is then transitioned into A F E, that would leave the Grand Marsh building using our current numbers with eighty students. I don't believe eighty students justify as a two-hundred-and-ten day full-time administrative contract. In fact, for, for better information, this year, the Grand Marsh Principal position also assumed the fire teaching duties. So it's already kind of moving in that direction. So that would mean that that position would not be needed next year. How would that building be covered? Well, it would be a combination between the A F Elementary Principal spending time out there, uh, the A F Elementary Assistant Principal spending time out there. To hearken back to last year when I spent, uh, I tried getting there at least one day a week as a district administrator. We have our Director of Student Services that can be out there to help. We have our, um, R T I Reading Specialist and that's coming later that can be out there. So there's coverage that can happen. So those staff numbers and those students aren't completely abandoned. And if you go back two years, so not this year, but the year prior, it was only halftime anyway. We had a principal halftime, grocery, halftime at Grand Marsh. So that's what kind of got me thinking on that line. So that's a position that can be eliminated. I would also propose the A F High School Assistant Principal position be eliminated because it's reducing from two-hundred-and-sixty days to two-hundred-and-ten. Currently, we have three Assistant Principal Positions. The High School Assistant is a two-sixty contract. Middle School and Elementary are two-hundred-and-ten. The reasoning behind that two-hundred-and-sixty day contract was, to my understanding, was for special projects. For example, this past summer, I had the High School Assistant Principal really take care of the school safety. Those plans that we're going to be reviewing here next, that was a special job. I think as our numbers reduce administratively, we can absorb those special projects amongst us. So I also believe that reducing that contract from two-sixty down to two-ten is a fundamental difference. There won't, there won't be those summer jobs, those summer special projects. Therefore, to stay legal with it, we need to eliminate that job and then come back with two-ten. But there's steps that have to be followed. Uh, the fourth adjustment that I, I'm proposing is we currently have a Reading Specialist, R T I Coordinator position. Five or six years ago, the district had a Director of Instruction. And the pattern around, if you, if you look around, schools will do that because it's a place where they had to reduce. It was a process, they think, well, we can reduce that position, but yet we'll have that covered with, with other duties. Normally, five or six years later, schools are revisiting, we need somebody who is the Director of Instruction. Uh, to, to quote President Truman, the buck has to stop somewhere with instruction. There has to be one person with an expertise that can then coordinate us, go back to our school report card, go back to primary, middle, high school, tuning that all align in spoken sequence and, and what we're trying to accomplish. So I see that as an area that we can improve on and hopefully improving on, on that student performance piece. So those four pieces are, when I look at our district and I see how we have moved towards the consolidating of our grade levels, I see how that all fits together. And that's the proposal to the board to discuss and ask questions at this time.
Could you tell me how many fourth graders are moving out and then if we put those sixteen in, that'll be fifth graders next year?
So next year's fifth grade class is ninety-nine. As of today. And these numbers, they change, but they're aggressive. Um, there's usually a lot of movement before it gets cold. And then it's steady and then there's some movement once upon a time as far as student.
How, how big would the fourth grade classes be? That...
You mean teacher to student ratio?
Yes.
Okay, so that's something where, once we determine what we're going to do, then we can parcel out what teachers go there. So for example, currently we have, and Mrs. Iary and Mr. Cool, please correct me if I'm wrong. At A F E, we have three fourth grade sections. Those sections have twenty-six students per class. At Grand Marsh, we have one fourth grade section and that is twenty-one students. So then you take the numbers that sign up and that we can predict. Maybe you need to keep four teachers to keep that number down to help even it. And kind of go back to last year with, with the, the large class of twenty-nine of fourth graders moving in, fifth graders at, at grocery. We were able to bring them in and then parcel staff, so we have six fifth grade teachers. Is that correct? So we were able to manipulate that. The, the teacher, student to teacher ratio, we look at where the numbers are and we're able to adjust our staff to go there. So it could be four, it could be five, it could be six. It's what we determine would be the best scenario for that.
We have currently a hundred and eight third grade students. They would be, let's say, we keep them, they all move into fourth grade. If you keep it with four teachers, you would have a one to twenty-seven ratio if you keep four teachers.
Mm-hmm. So that would be something we would really consider, is that the best? So we would move a teacher down there from one of these lower levels. So we have, as it is, seventy-seven going from pre-K into kindergarten. Do we need all of those kindergarten teachers?
So there could be a possibility of adding a fifth teacher to the...
Without question. And, and so, look at it this way, if this helps the board. As we, as our enrollment declines, administratively, the amount of staff can decline with that. Uh, support staff can decline with that. Our professional staff, because of the needs, we have to be responsive and make sure we're still, because that's really, when we look up at sixty point two, that's what we're judged on. So that's that one number that we really have to protect and make sure that we have that staff there. Does that help resolve the...
So the garden spoke tonight was worried about services. Would they be able to fix services they have out there?
Yes.
Without question.
Yeah, well, it, what we have, and it's, I understand the, the concern. But we have wonderful teachers out at Grand Marsh that care and love for their children. We have wonderful teachers at Adams Friendship Elementary that care and love for their children too. But I, I understand that, that, we experienced it all last year, that, that unknown. But the same programs that are aligned in our district that are at Grand Marsh are at A F E. So that the, the fourth grade teacher would be teaching fourth grade in A F E instead of teaching in Grand Marsh next year. As with all of the grocery teachers, Palatine.
With any of those special needs students, could the transition be, um, a little soft?
I see what I'm saying, that perhaps... We do that with all of our students who are transitioning in three buildings, not to jump in. Um, there is a transition period and it is, it's different for every child. So one child might need a month's transition. They might start the transition in May, like, start to come over to see what it's like. Other students have needed a longer transition and we know that transitions are hard for them. We start the transition earlier for that particular child. So that's, that's typical, I guess, regardless of if it's their fourth or fifth grader. If you're gonna transition buildings, you can get the, we try to do the soft landing.
Because it, it appears that these fourth graders will need that again maybe, um, when they go into fifth grade because they're going to be in two buildings in two years. And I understand that concern. Especially when you've got a student that likes ritual and routine and things like that. But you will be working on that.
Yep.
And...
As soon as we know what the decision is, we can plan for it. I mean, yes, in my mind, I'm already planning for it, but I, there's no, I can't tell you what we're gonna do until I know there's a decision that's been made. And like I said, for those children who have disabilities, it is whatever that one child needs, we do.
But it does sound like the families need to know more about it before the board is voting, that would be. And like, hear more things about it. So that they're not so shocked.
How would that occur? Because we can't really, until the board hears, can't really share that out.
Maybe like...
Sure.
Sharing plans that's, that are gonna happen. It's been talked about that it's gonna close, you know, maybe sharing ideas. As a board member, it's kind of scary to vote without knowing more concrete plans. I'm kind of, you just said it's hard to say the plan without the vote. I think it's hard to vote without the plan. And I don't, you know, hearing that A F E might lose a half a principal or a quarter or whatever, that would be concerning to me, that one of them might go out more. Because it seems like they're needed at A F E.
I have concerns as well. Um, even Grand Marsh not having a principal, you know, who's gonna do those duties? I'd put more burden on the other principals. Kind of cost savings first, instruction, in my opinion. And while that in a long-term finalized, I don't know, we've, we've spoken about what our goal is, but there's no, there's no timeline, um, no concrete plan. So to take up bits and pieces a little bit to get to that, I understand. But there's no really plan where it's gonna happen. You know what I mean? I don't know if that makes any sense at all, but it certainly has, you know, there, there's a lot of things involved in it. What are the actual cost savings? Because that's really all we're getting, we're doing is saving money, in my opinion. What's the bus income? Um, is the cost savings worth the loss of instruction or the more physical burden to the primary instruction team or, or not? A lot of questions that, that I feel like I would like to answer myself.
Okay, and that would be where I'm currently confused. Because it was my instructions, it was my understanding that each year I would propose how we continue on the consolidation. So that's what I'm proposing here. Next year, we can open it again. Uh, I thought we had already come to that as a board, as far as when the room is open at our elementary, we would start to transition the students. So that's, that's something that the board needs to consider.
I think it's difficult. I understand what you're saying. I think it's difficult for newer board members because they were perhaps part of that conversation. So I can see where... So I can see where La has come from as well. Is it necessary that we decide at this meeting if we have subsequent questions that perhaps in January, we would feel uncomfortable if we submitted questions to our superintendent that they would like addressed, whether it's financial? Because I agree, we have a vision of consolidation, I'm behind that. Yet I also believe that there are other things that I'm just, it would be important to me to have answers to as we move forward. And I really loved when we went through that referendum process where we almost knew month by month by month what were our goals. And that was really helpful for me to see how we achieve that. So as we look at consolidation, perhaps a timeline like that would help us understand, plus the community would understand as well, so.
To answer your question, there isn't a deadline. No, this is just planning for the future, giving us enough time to prepare.
Because I certainly want to embrace our parents and let them know if this is decided, if these are the suggestions for transition. How did we go about making students comfortable? We don't want to lose families because of their fear of that. And I really believe that more communication and transparency and showing this is where we're going, but we as a board would like more answers. You answered something to me already about, okay, with five teachers, it'd be a class of twenty-one, twenty-two, which looks a lot better to me than a class of twenty-seven or twenty-eight when we're talking about fourth graders. So, and I love what you said, transportation costs, bussing them into AFE. And I also worry about leaving a building, and even with eighty students. Want to be sure that they feel that they have someone that when they're having a difficult problem with your parent or student or even staff having problems, that there is someone that they feel that they can consult with. And it looks like you have some thoughts about that as well.
I think two years ago, we had, Grand Marsh had this kind of difficult school. So I think we threw some bodies out and made some changes. Most of the complaints that I got from families, parents, were the disruptive nature of Grand Marsh in some areas, you know, that's understandable for class. And we kind of worked hard to address that two years ago. And the concern that I've got is that happened again with a lack of a principal there. It's one of the many concerns I've got. I mean, I've, just to be upfront and honest, I've had people call me, there's groups out there that run by little schools. And they're not coming here. So, you know, I mean, it's just things that I feel like we should at least address and maybe make more transparent. I guess what our goal would be or what the, what could be available to those people that have those concerns as well. Before we just, you know, go in with all kinds of weight. My concerns.
Jim, given the changes in those administrative positions, will those just, will those?
Well, you're changing the principal's days, or the assistant principal's days, and adding days to the elementary school. Given that change, do those need to be reported?
Yes. If the job is increasing, so from an elementary position from two-ten to two-sixty? No. But that job that is being reduced? Yes, that would.
There's a differentiation between it increasing and decreasing. I don't see much difference, but I don't know.
A lot of it lies in, so with the, the reading specialist, look at that one. We're just increasing those duties and the contract needs to recommend that. The high school assistant principal is a fundamental change in which there will not be summer hours. So in that instance, we can then post. I don't think I explained that very well.
We'll talk.
The reading specialist then will continue to be called the RTI Coordinator Reading Specialist, but will have extra added responsibilities with instruction?
My proposal would make that a Director of Instruction position that then has those duties.
Understood. So it would be Director of Instruction, no longer called Reading Specialist RTI.
Correct.
So it could change the title, you don't have to post it yet? Okay.
It's a decision.
Questions?
Go ahead, Jim. So I attended all the meetings last year. We did the consolidation meetings, went to the one on Grand Marsh. A couple of common themes that it seems like we're having is classroom size is always the discussion and what we think is good. But if we look at our own policies, we don't have a policy that gives a guideline for administration of what we think is the right classroom size for each grade. We just, you know, if they tell us it's twenty-one or twenty-five or, so that's always a moving number. I think as a board, you know, in our long-term plans for stability within our district, we need to sit down and decide what's the right numbers for the administration. I can tell you with my past experience, it's a great policy for the simple fact that if the administration sees that it's going to violate that policy, it needs to come to the board and tell them, number one, why. But number two, what resources are going to be in place to address that, whether it's a short-term or long-term issue. Like if you have an outline class that's twenty-nine and the policy says only to twenty-five. So that's one of the things, you know, as we're looking at this consolidation, we need to decide as a board really, what's the numbers that we want to look at? I mean, especially looking at, you know, our score at sixty percent. Maybe we need to go out and look at the data and what's the right class sizes? And go with that. But the second one is, you know, you always hear a common theme is, you know, we are a very large district, busing. How long is my child going to be on the bus? How much does it cost? I can tell you, Mr. Beal and I have had this discussion. I know in the prior school district that we were in, they had just gone to GPS in the buses. And I can literally, and I turned my phone off, by the way. I could literally go to my phone and tell you where my child's bus was. You have to sign in, it's all secure. And within five minutes, I could tell you if it's going to be at my front door or it's going to be wherever. Given that we're looking at more and more consolidation of that outline into here, our children are going to be on the buses longer. You know, case in point, when we get snow and ice, I mean, am I supposed to sit at the end of my driveway for a half an hour, forty-five minutes? Wondering where the bus is going to be or is it going to be there on time? Or better yet, if my kid, if I'm calling my child and they're old enough to let themselves in and be at home, I know what time they arrived and I could call them just by working out my cell phone. How many people don't have cell phones? It may be an added cost that we look at to alleviate some of those concerns that parents have about, number one, time on the bus. But number two, you know, when they're going to be picked up or, you know, arriving at home. But the other added advantage to that is also with routes. You can look at how your routes, there's software now, especially with GPS, to make it more cost-effective. So there's a lot of, you can capture a lot of data by using that. Again, you know, I get Jeff's concerns, you know, what's our cost overall saving by just moving one grade? You know, it may be washed out by the cost of the bus never entering here. I don't know. But I know our overall plan, we have to consolidate. That's, I mean, it's there. The question is, are we doing it piecemeal or are we just doing it all at once? And I think that's a great conversation that we really haven't had as a board that maybe we need to have next month.
Any more discussion? So at this time, we can either make the motion to approve this or we can table it for next month. I'm kind of hearing that we would like to table it. I see that changes. So according to table for next month, you, the board members that have questions, let's get those into Jim as soon as we can. So we can answer those questions to the whole board, not just the individual. And we can make a decision next month.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll put that back on.
Thank you.
With that, you move it on.
School safety plan, you remember last month we approved the school safety plan? Well, as this is a very new item, not only do we have to have the board look at it and approve it, but the board has to approve, approve it. And then we are, as a district, they have, the Department of Justice has a website set up where we have to enter each of these independent documents. So in the content there, you have the requirements that the district must do each year by January one. And then you also have all of those documents for review. And this would simply take a motion to accept the school safety plan presented.
I move to accept the school safety plans presented for each of the individual schools. And so.
Can you put the motion exactly like this?
Oh, no, 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 what you, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You are correct. If you would, Kathy. You are in action on that.
There, we got her to this one.
Yes.
I move to approve the school safety plan as presented, including the following specific points. Safety plans for each building, school violence drills, safety training, and law enforcement review.
I will say that.
No.
Lana. You want to talk about that?
Saying it's a change from our first motion.
So motion agreed by Kathy, second by Lana, to approve the school safety plan as presented, including the following specific points, safety plans for each building, school violence drills, safety training, and law enforcement review. Discussion. I actually brought this up at the county board level and both the sheriff and the emergency manager would like copies of these plans. So something happened at one of our buildings.
I was under the, I think they do, they were part of the team that helped create them?
Sheriff's department, definitely.
He said he hasn't gotten the plans yet?
It hasn't just been tapped and approved, they approved last month. We'll send them along.
So yeah, you'll be moving those forward.
Tabitha has it all.
Okay.
And Tabitha.
So that is in process of being moved.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Your notes are, is it okay?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shouman?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
I will just pass this line to. We are going to report, Board of Education, any clean report.
So each on, what, November sixteenth? Ron and I each attended the program that Mr. Gould and his staff and his kids had out at Grand Marsh School, it was for veterans, honoring the veterans. Just want to comment that it was extremely well done, touching, and appreciated.
Anyone else?
Also on Letch Friday Night, the foundation, I have friends at Area Educational Foundation, along with AF Morris, sponsored the classical last. And it was quite a lot. Excellent musicians. Kent and I have talked about music, a little bit of the Calcutta there, a bit of John Lennon, and some traditional Christmas music with a little bit of a creak in it, so. I guess I'm going to throw a little bit of a plug out there for the Adams Friendship Area Education Foundation. And we have these sponsored activities or events. Don't miss out on an opportunity to see some fine acts and other things going on at the Fine Arts Center. Also want to tell everybody the ACT, A-C-T, Adams Community Theater, put on It's a Wonderful Life. Were a few performances. And a few people in this audience and at the head table here were part of the reading of It's a Wonderful Life. I thought it was an excellent performance and it's really amazing how we have so much talent in this district rather than this county. For the ACT, Adams County, Adams Community Theater, the Fine Arts Center, as well as San County Players. A lot of opportunities for kids.
It was very much fun also to see the district attorney and judge and, I mean, the community people that participated also in the regular play. It was very much fun. We had very good job. The Beal team.
With that, Lana, you think from the foundation?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll go over to the room. Barbara?
Barbara? Well, I just wanted everyone to know, I got notified that our auditors that are retired from the firm and that the firm is no longer going to do schools. So I will be going out to bed at eight in the morning. And it should be brought to you guys by March.
Brady in the front row?
We have our holiday event on Monday. We have a special person coming to visit kids and maybe bring some candy and treats for them. And it starts at four-thirty, dinner will be served till six o'clock, and activities starting at five-thirty to seven, so welcome.
I know Brady did say that AFE did the, paying more for the Toys for Tots, that he announced how much the high school earned. We're not competitive at all at AFE, so I thought I'd better announce how much we raised. AFE raised one thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-one cents for Toys for Tots. Just saying.
Michelle?
That's awesome. First, I just want to extend our invitation, if you'd like to do some caroling with us on the twenty-first, we'll be meeting about seven fifteen a.m. and we'll be greeting kids like we have done in the past as they enter school. Another thing is on the, on December third, our staff at the middle school had a training through Monica Whitman from DPI. And it was on the eight pathways to promote resiliency. And it was in response to something that we did last year. And it was really, it was a training like Chris and I had said, it wasn't one that we'd had previously. And really it was looking for other ways to support kids as they come to school and identifying great ways to promote resiliency amongst them. What we actually had control over, so it was really a great training and teachers felt really, I think empowered would be the word that I would use, so that was great.
We have access testing starting now. That's testing our EL students, English learner students. We also have some coaching going on in the classrooms. We have some, Donica's doing a lot of coaching and Don Clark is doing some coaching in our middle and elementary school. We have some, Donica's doing a lot of coaching and Don Clark is doing some coaching in our middle and elementary schools. And we also have some CISA V reps coming in, doing some instructional coaching too. That's going really well, supporting our staff. I guess that's all for now.
Okay. No business items for me, just happy and healthy holidays to you who come now.
Chris?
Tomorrow, in the next few days, I'm going to be attending the sheriff's conference with our school resource officers, Sheriff Wallen, Lieutenant Greenow. So I'm looking forward to that. The agenda's very full with crossover on school safety and threat assessments and things that are very pertinent right now, so it'll be exciting three days.
I had mentioned before the training of trainers that we completed for Safe School Ambassadors. Just prior to Thanksgiving, we attend staff members that were trained in restorative practices. So we will be able to offer the same capacity for restorative practices within district trainings for staff by our own staff here as well. No, we also received the Fast Forward Grant on Friday. We found out, very quick turnaround time, Wednesday it was submitted. Friday, we found out we were awarded a Fast Forward Grant for training our teaching staff. So we will be able to train 17 staff members. Some will be obtaining their special education license, some expanding their special education license, looking for science teachers, as well as getting 316 teachers trained in 316s as well.
Two things that happened Saturday. Thirty-two teams wrestle at the Devil Duel. Sean took that over completely. It's moved towards Adams Friendship Hosting at the Chula Dome. Thirty-two teams, 100 coaches, hundreds of wrestlers, a ton of fans, win smoothly. Sean gets a lot of credit for making that go. He organizes one of the biggest tournaments of the year, besides the Safe Tournament. So it's pretty amazing to be there and watch that wrestling go on. And our team, I think, went two for three that day, the Adams Friendship Team. So, good job. And then that night, the Andy Kolf and, where's the other? And some of us here competed, but Andy Kolf hosted a trivia night. That was a blast and raised over 700 bucks for the Adams Friendship Education Foundation Teacher Grants. So it was a great, great event also.
You're not going to say that Mr. Berman?
I was going to say.
No way. I'm not going to say that the interventionist.
That's right. Winners.
They did, they did get an answer from one of our team members though, so disqualified.
I'm glad we're not the product. Jeff?
Yeah, we've had a couple of construction projects at the school district. One is a girls softball project. Put some rain tile in there and did some stuff there, so hopefully that'll put us a dryer spring. The other thing is in the green wing fishbowl, if you get a chance, stop by and check out our construction there. We built the food pantry and for the storage area. We created a little office. Bob Goodhue, Rodney Johnson, Vern Reinhardt, they all did a great job. We're doing commercial grade projects, metal studs, TK frames and... There's certainly guys a lot of money, all redesigned and built by us. If you get a chance to look at it. And that was a quick turnaround. It's sudden, a week or two, we started construction, had it built in short order. Very impressive, guys do great work. Make comparison to stuff I do with that commercial construction. See on the final.
Ricky?
This is a follow-up on that. We have the food pantry open, open October 22nd. And every, every Monday night, we've serviced food to families. Last, tonight, 17 families. And we were surprised, second harvest of turkeys. So that was nice, did very, very clear. And every day at 3 o'clock, I go over to the food pantry and have two to three students coming and taking them home. So it's really been quite an asset to the high school.
Thank you.